Good evening. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We're going to change the order of the agenda a little bit because it's a little after 8 o'clock and we want people to be able to get home in order to get up early. So we're going to have the Hyview report before we do the public input portion. So, take it away, Dr. Chase.
Well, actually, I'm going to call on Principal Master Angelo and his staff to give a report on Hyview Elementary School. So, Mr. Master Angelo?
There we go, okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here. We have some special guests this evening too. We have some four-legged friends and some students. So, we're going to try to go through this rather quickly so they can get home and get to sleep at a decent hour. We have two videos that we want to show tonight. One actually concludes the entire presentation. It's about a minute and a half long. We have one in the middle that's a little longer. It's about an hour and 45 minutes. So if you just bear with us, please. It's about six minutes. So, I'm letting you know upfront that it's about six minutes long, but it's worth the wait. I would like to thank the Board of Trustees, the Board of Education, for everything you do, the support that you give us. What you're about to see over the next few minutes would not and could not take place if it wasn't for all of you and your support, and we appreciate that very much. Also, Central Office Administration, from the Superintendent to the Assistant Superintendent, through the Director of Facilities and Superintendent for Business. It's very, very promising and appreciated by us when we ask for something and it doesn't take long for you to say, "Will it help the kids?" We say, "Yes," and then you say, "Then go ahead." So, thank you very, very much. So, there is a new mission and new vision in the district, and for Greenberg it is the same for Hyview School. Within five years, we are setting our sights on becoming a world-class district. We're setting our sights on becoming a world-class school. And what that means really is the Henrys and the Melanys of the world and everyone else, they're going to learn and become global, emotionally ready, developmentally ready, and socially ready to face any challenge that takes place in Greenberg or anywhere in the community or in the world. And the mission itself, we are committed to educating our students so they could succeed in a global society. And we feel that our seven- and eight-year-olds, our six-year-olds up through nine-year-olds are, will be ready by the time they leave Hyview. So, the goals that we're going to be talking about this evening, you can see up there, they're in green, the facilities and technology. We're going to talk a little bit about the stakeholders in the district and in Hyview. And we're going to talk about our aligning and articulating the curriculum. So, the staff is going to get moving in just a minute. I want to introduce the presenters this evening. We have our Library and Media Specialist, Ms. Tracy Wong; our third-grade reading specialist, Mr. Mike McHale; our second-grade reading specialist, Ms. Stacy Cristello; we have a third-grade teacher, Mr. Chavillo; and a second- and third-grade teacher, Ms. Jane Wasserman. So, they're going to be presenting tonight with a lot of what we're going to be talking about. The first thing is facilities. I'll take that. We have basically two things. We have a new bus path. What does that mean? You couldn't see it tonight because it's dark, but here's where I talked about the support of the Board and Central Administration. We heard the concerns from the community. You know that the school day was extended and the hours were stretched in the beginning of the day and the end of the day, and the day begins a little earlier, and the parents were concerned, "My child isn't getting off the bus in time." Well, it's very, very difficult when a school is put together in 1964 and the architecture has one or two buses dropping off at one time. Whereas in Lee F. Jackson and R.J. Bailey, they can line up all of their buses. We can't do that. So, there's some pictures of the construction that began, which is actually right behind you in that corner. The new bus path is going to come straight up and around past the cafeteria. So, we're hoping we can line up four or five buses at a time, load and unload five sets of, five buses' worth of students, and we will get started just as quickly as Lee F. Jackson and R.J. Bailey. So, now we're just waiting on the weather to cooperate. And the gym curtain, this was an idea that we had actually at the end of last year and when I spoke to Mr. Falcone about it. Mr. Falcone, thank you for the gym curtain. As you can see, this picture down here, there's two different classes going on at one time. We have a general ed class taking place right here, and we have an adaptive phys ed class taught by Mr. Pat. That's taking place right here. So, at one time, we can have two classes going on. And also, on a day like today, when it rained all day, we had phys ed on one side and indoor recess on the other. And it really works out beautifully. Mr. Pat has been everywhere, from the multipurpose area to a narrow little hallway near the music room, to outside, and he finally has a home, and his students do as well. And they appreciate it very much, so that's the gym curtain. We're going to talk a little bit about technology. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wong and her special guests.
Okay, so the library's focusing on one really big initiative, becoming future-ready. And part of that means less consumption of knowledge and more creation of knowledge. We applied for and were awarded a grant for a makerspace. As you may know, a makerspace gives people the opportunity to make, to create, to tinker. It fosters their curiosity so they can be innovative. Through that, we're going to be doing Minecraft. I know a lot of you might be sitting there saying, "What does Minecraft really have to do with learning?" But Minecraft game design is a catalyst for learning. It gives children a chance to become resilient, persevere, work through their obstacles, and that transfers over to other skills. While building Minecraft, they're also learning math, proportions, literacy. They're working as a team, collaborating. Through the library, we've also done two IB initiatives for the month of September. It was caring, and I have student work. She's actually going to present. Melanie?
Helping people. Hi, I help people fix things. I just fixed this TV. Now I will fix a sink. I fixed their sink and they went to the beach to celebrate. I fixed the whole town from breaking. I love fixing stuff. I wish I could fix more things. Oh, I just got my wish. I'm going to fix something, but I forgot what it's called. Fixing things is what I call caring. The end.
What I like about the library is that it has lots of books and I love reading.
So, that was for the month of September, the caring IB character trait. For the month of October, we have Henry Fleming. Melanie's from Ms. Roth Moreno's class, by the way. She's a second grader, and Henry is from Mr. Chavelo's class. He's a third grader.
Oh, look at him! Oh, my God! He looks so cool!
Ways to communicate. One way to communicate is to talk to each other or talk to yourself. You can also communicate with facial expressions, like surprised or mad. Another way to communicate is to whisper to your friends, your mom, and dad, and brothers and sisters. One last way to communicate is to text on your phone. Another way to communicate is, wait, to, on your phone, is to call people. Once in my life, I, wait, once in my life, I was at my grandma's house with my, out with my mom and my dad, so I called and text them.
I like the library because you can be creative and read books.
So, one thing we're really trying to focus on, one thing we're really trying to focus on in order to be a world-class school is being less teacher-directed and giving students more voice, empowering them to tell their stories, to create.
Awesome.
Okay, so another piece of technology that we've added this year in the third grade are Chromebooks, and we now have a Chromebook for every third-grade student. So, we're very excited as teachers, and the kids are just as excited. Henry's in my class, and they, the kids love going on the Chromebooks. We've been able to do things like, now we can do iReady in the classroom, and it adds much more flexibility to our schedule. If I had a media period, second period, in the past, now I don't have to stop a math lesson in the middle and walk to media. Now we can move our schedule around and really get more productive iReady time in. We've been using them also in reading groups. For example, Mr. McHale pushes into my room, and we can have small groups working on their Chromebooks, on reading assignments, while we work with small groups of students on their reading skills so they can stay more focused on an assignment independently. And we don't have to stop as much and say, "Hey, get back to work," because they're engaged and they're working, and we've done many good things on there. But I think most importantly, what we've been able to do is get on Google Classroom. We've started toying with that in the past couple weeks. The students can come in. We could have morning work assignments up for them to start the day, and it gets them really engaged and start it off right away. We are starting research on the Chromebooks where, instead of using a paper graphic organizer, we can have the students input the data that they research right into a Google form, and it uploads right to us. Their writing assignments come right to us, so we can make corrections right on the Google Docs, and the kids can get our instant feedback. We can comment on the students' work directly to them. It also provides for student interaction because students can read each other's work and give constructive criticism and what they liked about a classmate's work, or if they're working in the same group, they can comment on each other's research and things like that. So, we're really excited about all the things we can do on there. And even with students who may not like to write on paper, I've seen a lot more out of students because they get to now type their work. And I think it really is encouraging to them because now if handwriting is not maybe the easiest thing for them, they get to type, and I've seen a difference in some of those kids too. So, we're excited to see where it can take us, and I think it's going to open a whole world of possibilities in our classrooms.
Tinker is an coding program that we're actually using on the Chromebooks right now. This effort's being spearheaded by Mrs. Dariano. We are teaching our students one of the most important 21st century skills, and that is how to be competent digital citizens. And learning how the fundamentals of coding and how computers work is one of those essential skills. You'll also see Wixi underneath that. Wixi is going to be one of the up-and-coming programs that we're going to use to foster UDL, which you will hear about soon, to give students the ability to express their understanding in multiple ways and to help teachers express what they need students to use in multiple ways. Thank you.
And just very quickly, Mavis Beacon. Some of you may have already heard of Mavis Beacon. You may have it. It's a keyboarding program that we have licenses for our computer lab. Please fear not if your child is a two-finger typer and if they are typist and if they go really, really slowly. We have proof in our own home. Our one son, who's a freshman in college, used to do this in second and third grade. He's now the fastest typist I've ever seen, and I don't think he's ever made a mistake. He just, he flies through it. And so, with growth and development and Mavis Beacon, your kids will become much better and quicker typists. So, the stakeholders, we have a bunch. The first one we're going to talk about a little bit is our friend here. You probably can't see him, but our buddy Bradley, who you know about. Ms. Cristella's going to talk a little bit about Bradley.
Good evening. So, this year Bradley has been taking a more pause-on approach in the classroom, let's say, at Hyview Elementary School. He is working in the classrooms in both second and third grade, and not just working in a small group. He's actually being more part of the whole class, working with the teachers, whether it's doing a shared reading, a read-aloud, or just listening to some of the second graders read some of their writing and editing. So, we appreciate Mona and Bradley so working with us. And our goal is to make sure Bradley's being seen by all of our students and not just our struggling or reluctant readers at Hyview.
So, I just want to point out, let's see. I just want to point out one picture. It might be a little difficult to see, but this picture right here, doesn't it look like Bradley's reading a book? Okay? He does. He really does. He enjoys just sitting with the kids. Some of the other things that we were going to talk about, the Greenberg Police. They come by, they visit, just so the kids can see the patrol officers in their uniforms. They put a name to a face. But they're also going to be here a couple of times during the course of the year to help us with our evacuation drills as well. The Hartsdale Rotary, I'm actually going to the luncheon tomorrow. The administration, we rotate weeks to go, and tomorrow is my luncheon. They're actually going to be coming back and doing some volunteer reading as well as early as next month, and they'll be here throughout the year. The Greenberg Nature Center, they come to us. We have them come in and provide lessons for our second graders. Curious on Hudson, they're housed in Dobbs Ferry. They're basically a STEAM-initiated corporation, and they are in charge of 90% of our after-school program, which started today, and you'll hear a little bit more about that later. And the Bungie Corporation, not Bunji, but Bungie. That's the video that you're going to see. It's about the volunteer readers, and we're just going to ask Ms. Cristella to talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, so you will see in our video, we'll give you a description of what Bungie actually looks like on Thursdays at Hyview every single day. The most exciting news about it that I want to share before you see our video is we've got news from Rob, the head of the Bungie Corporation, telling us that the numbers doubled in volunteers. So, it's going to be exciting to see that in January, we will now be putting Bungie within their third-grade classrooms.
Bungie's an agricultural corporation, and they, their home office is in White Plains. If you've been to Hyview lately, you will notice that our second floor was beautified by our Bungie Corporation during a spring break a few years ago where they repainted our yellow and green color scheme. So, thank you to Bungie for that. And here we are three years later, and they are looking to do more community service. And that community service this year is where they're volunteering to come into Hyview once a week on Thursdays and read to some of our reluctant second-grade readers. The first day was a meet-and-greet. There was some pizza, and the kids met their reader. And by Wednesday of the next week, they were asking when they were going to meet their reader again, their volunteer again. And on Thursdays during their lunch and recess period, they meet in Mr. McHale's reading lab, and the volunteers set up shop with their readers, and then it's a combination of the readers reading to them, the volunteers reading to the second graders, and it's been a wonderful relationship. I'm sure the kids are going home saying that I have a new reading buddy, and I know that the adults, the volunteers, are leaving here and saying to their families, "I too have a reading buddy," and their buddy happens to be seven years old. It's a great program, and it's sort of co-coordinated, if you will, by our two reading teachers, Ms. Stacy Cristello, our second-grade reading teacher, and Mr. Mike McHale, our third-grade reading teacher.
Hi, my name is Stacy Cristello. I'm the second-grade teacher here at Hyview Elementary School. Today, we have Bungie reading going on in our building, and I wanted to share a little bit about it. We have eight volunteers from the outside community who come in every Thursday during the second-grade lunch period to eat lunch and read with some of our reluctant readers in second grade. In the beginning of the year, the reading teachers at Hyview Elementary got to meet with our Bungie volunteers prior to partnering up with the children. During that time, we talked about different ways to read with the kids, strategies for struggling words, and how to build a relationship with our younger students.
Coming to the school and reading with the young kids is one of the highlights of my week. It allows me to spend time with them, and also I can see, week to week, the progress that they make in learning to read and sound out words. And as we move forward, the books get more and more interesting and more and more tougher.
Um, I like to read.
You should say something that I can get, I can show you on the TV at my work, and I can say, "That's Denise, and that's who I read with." And I also read with Jane. Hi, do you like reading?
Yes.
Rita, can you tell us what you like about Reading Buddies?
I like about Reading Buddies is where I get to read books with my reading buddy teacher. And what's best about it is that I have to do work, but I can read some cool facts to my reading teacher about animals.
So, you like reading books where you learn new things. What about lunch? You have lunch with your buddy too? Very nice, thank you.
Hi, I'm one of the Book Buddy reading volunteers, Cheryl, and I come every week and talk to Marisol. She's just a delight and is really enjoying learning how to read better. And already in a few weeks' time, I see that she's totally improved on her reading. And I really get a lot out of it, watching these children learning, you know, how to read better.
Hi, my name is Taco. I'm from Bungie, and this is my reading buddy, Joanna. We started reading a month ago, and for me, it's quality time each week, something I look forward to, to spend some time with Joanna and read a few books with her. In the few short weeks that we've been with them so far, I could already see that she's getting more comfortable with reading, and she's becoming more advanced, I guess you could say, with the words that she's pronouncing and everything. I could see from Joanna that she's also enjoying the reading portion of it mostly, and it's nice to also socialize a little bit, get to know them, and they get to know us. That's another big part of the rewards here as well.
What do you like best about coming to Reading Buddies on Thursdays?
Coming, reading with my buddies and eating lunch.
Eating lunch with your buddy? Oh, I love it. It's, there's nothing better. There's nothing better. It's a highlight of my week. It's incredible to see children or anyone really learn, and it's such an important skill, of course, to have. And I can't think of doing anything more valuable than this.
Hi, I'm Rob Lazarus. I'm one of the coordinators for Bungie Book Buddies. It's where we spend an hour a week, usually on Thursdays, reading with second graders in order to help them with their reading. Some of the children are a little bit behind in their reading, and through the course of the year, our goal is to help bring them on or above grade. It truly is one of the highlights of my week, and the smiles and affection you get from the, from the young children is so rewarding. And we're doing a good thing, and we're doing it in the Bungie name. So, I hope you'll, for those people who are at Bungie, I hope you'll join us and come and be part of the program.
So, we started it this year, and we're hoping to actually increase it in January by bringing in more volunteers. And if we're able to bring in more Bungie volunteers, then we can bring in more readers as well. And by that time, we're hoping for some, for some third-grade readers. We're very, very excited about it, and if we're excited, you know the kids are really, really excited about this. So, at the very end of this, it's just about over, but there's one student who, there's one student who wrote something, and if you're able to read it, it's, here we go. Reading Buddies is so much fun to do. So, that was just... Thank you. We're going to go very quickly. We know that it was, we were supposed to be, there's a limit, and we might have gone over with that video, and for that, I apologize. But we do have a couple more things that we just wanted to finish up. Ms. Wasserman's going to talk briefly about UDL.
Good evening. Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, is something we're learning a lot about recently, and we're very excited about it. And the big question is why? Because one size does not fit all. I don't know if you can see, those are two teeny little shoes trying to fit on big feet. Whether you're talking about shoes or you're talking about lessons, one size does not fit all. UDL is rooted in universal design and architecture. It's about designing access for all right from the get-go. And what's essential for some is usable by all. So, there's a couple of different, I know the pictures are a little small. On the right side, you have a building where a ramp was added as an afterthought. So, the people who could walk up the stairs or might need to use the stairs don't have access anymore. But when you integrate the stairs and the ramp, there's access for everyone, no matter what your need is. So, applying the same concept to learning, UDL gives us a framework for removing barriers to learning. It's based on lesson design that levels the playing field for all learners by factoring in all needs, whether there's difficulty reading, whether you're learning English, no matter what. And this, we're scaffolding learning through a variety of low-tech and high-tech supports, and we're using a flexible means of engaging students and of students being able to express their learning in a variety of ways. So, UDL at Hyview, we spent last Tuesday with Nicole Tucker-Smith, and she encouraged us a lot to start small. So, this year, we at Hyview have decided to focus on writing. We want to improve the inclusiveness of writing lessons so that we're reaching a variety of learners. And some of the scaffolds we might include would be the use of visuals, like Google Images, to help aid in learning vocabulary. Using use of speech-to-text programs for students who have difficulty either motorically or in composing. And it's easier for them to speak their ideas than to get them down on paper. We will be using graphic organizers, word banks, a whole slew of things, just like that. And this kind of says it all. Keep calm and learn your way. Thank you.
Hi, this is going to be a video about some of the amazing things happening right here at Hyview School.
Thank you. One last thing I wanted to tell that Bungie video that we did, that was produced- Highview School. One last thing I wanted to tell that Bungie video that we did, that was produced and created by Mr. Brian Parker. He came here last Thursday. He worked on it over the weekend, sent it to me yesterday and said, "How's this?" So that is also Greenberg at its finest because Brian works with Mr. Lewis. And that is it. So thank you very, very much.
Very, very good. One, one question.
Sure.
I, I loved, I loved all the reading. I loved the Reading Buddies. I loved the technology emphasis. Mavis Beacon, how much time per week do the kids actually get to use that program?
It's a great question. Mavis Beacon is in the computer lab. They have not started yet because we wanted to kind of introduce it tonight. We have the licenses. It will be installed. The kids go into the computer lab twice a week, so we're hoping that one of those visits in the lab will start with Mavis Beacon, whether it be 15 minutes before each time they go in, or if they just designate one time. We haven't figured it out yet. We want to see how well the kids are able to adjust to it and pick it up. Some might get it a lot faster than others, but it will be at least one time in, during the week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Gary, I have a question about the Reading Buddies program. What is it about that program or using outsiders that helps the students improve? I guess the question is why? How is that, preferable may not be the right word, but how is that beneficial outside of a classroom setting, a traditional classroom setting?
It, it's interesting because I, I think it kind of ties into with your own children. They might not share things with their parents, but they might share it with another family member, or a buddy, or a friend down the street, or so. There's just, there are certain things where it, it just clicks. We have a book club that meets once a month, and we, we stress to the parents that it's, it's a commitment for the whole year. Parent reads to the child, child reads to the parent, and it's successful every single year. Here, we have volunteers, strangers, these kids have never met before, they're going to become best friends. And, and I think the, the barriers are let down, similar to UDL. There are no bar, well, I can't do that in front of my teacher. My teacher knows that I can't. But to a stranger who they will only see once a week, there, there's, it's, there are no secrets. It's the same thing as this little guy who's standing in front of me. He will sit or lie down in front of the students, and the students who are, who are really nervous about reading and making a mistake, because what happens when you read in front of the teacher, or in front of classmates, and you make a mistake? It's, that's not exactly right, let's try it again. Bradley doesn't really respond. He doesn't, he doesn't say, "You said it wrong, you pronounced it wrong." He listens, and that alone is enough for the kids to say, "I want to read in front of Bradley. I want to read in front of my volunteer reader. I want to listen to my volunteer reader read to me." And, and when it works in, in both directions, the kids actually learn more, and they're becoming better readers for it. You're welcome. Thank you. I'd like to thank my staff as well for presenting and helping me present tonight. Did a wonderful job. I'm really proud of them, and I'm very, very proud to be the principal of Highview. It's, it's a great place to be, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mastriangelo, I too want to thank you for leading your staff and for providing the community with just a very small opening into what's happening at Highview, and I know that there's so much more, and I wish there was more time to share all the things that happened at Highview. And as many of you know, I had an opportunity, I would say the pleasure, of spending three full days at Highview Elementary School during Mr. Mastriangelo's absence, and I thought that I would be there as the principal, and I said, "Yes, I could be with the kids, I can't wait to get there." And it was, it ran like a well-oiled machine. I didn't have to do any announcements. Teachers did everything. I didn't have to sit with the kids in the cafeteria because they got in trouble. I didn't really have to do anything because everything was already in place. Walked into classrooms, saw examples of foundations being implemented early on. Kids were happy, parents were happy to drop their children off. The PTA had a great sale going on that day, and it was, just speaks to the energy of, of being here, and being entrenched in the culture for those few days was actually invigorating to me as a school central office administrator who doesn't necessarily have the time and opportunity to spend three full days at a school. I am so proud of the teachers at Highview. I watch you guys just hang out after work and even get there super, super duper early in the morning, and it's not fluff, what you're sharing today. I was a witness to it, and you all had no idea I was coming for those three days, and so I got to see magic. So I thank you all for all that you do, for making young children feel really special, for helping kids transition into Bailey Elementary School and transition from Jackson Elementary School. You guys rock, and so I really appreciate the presentation. Moreover, I also appreciate the fact that you highlighted your STEAM/STEM initiative and the approach that you're taking in building young engineers at Highview Elementary School. Keep doing what you guys are doing. You make us proud.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is statements from the public. Ivy, do you have? All right.
Are we allowed to do that?
One person.
No, but I thought that if you ask, when the committee gets...
One person per organization. Okay. Our first speaker is Michelle DeSilva.
Hi. I just, actually just wanted to give everyone an update about a great event that happened here in Greenberg. On October 29th, the PTA Council hosted a resource fair where over 200 people in the community came together to explore resources on education, health and wellness, and special education. There were nonprofit and for-profit resources there. There was also free family fun, like Zumba yoga, face painting, Storytime from the Greenberg Library, as well as a visit from Bradley the Therapy Dog. It was a great first event. We really, we, we want to tell you it's kind of after the fact now, but just with a lot of people here and even on TV, to just know that we do really cool things in the community, and we would love especially for the teachers and staff to participate and experience kind of what was there. There were a lot of families there as well, and a lot of great things that we would have loved more teachers and staff to see, so hopefully, we can figure out a way how to make that happen next year. But I wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers, especially the PTA that helped pull this together. We wanted to thank Paul Finer, the Greenberg Police, the Fairview and Hartsdale Fire Department, and last but not least, our superintendent and Board of Education for the support. This was parental engagement and community involvement, I think, at its finest. So we just want to continue to do more things like this. We want to show people how great and engaged Greenberg can be, and we're moving forward. So thank you, and we hope we see a lot of teachers and staff here today. We just want to work together on, on doing more things like this for the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Mira.
Good evening, Dr. Chase, President Warner. I am electrifying, aren't I? Hello? Better? No? Bring it up?
You should teach a voice, too. Do you have a voice? I don't need that, actually. There you go. Good evening, Dr. Chase, President Warner. Board trustees, community, parents, staff, thank you so much for coming out, and children, I guess they're home better, ready. I would just like to acknowledge SRPs. SRPs are our school-related professionals. SRP Day is celebrated on the third Tuesday in each November, and it acknowledges those members in our district who really have that commitment and energy to really help move our district along. Our SRPs include secretaries, school nurses, custodians, food service people, teacher assistants, teacher aides. Want to make sure I'm not leaving, if I am. Dicky, if I am, yell it out, please.
The monitors, healthcare.
The monitors, yes, absolutely. And, and dozens of other job titles. They really have, this is Doug from NICEIT, which is our union, so I would really like to again acknowledge and thank them all so much for all they do. Thank you.
That concludes the public input portion of our agenda. The next item, next up is the superintendent's report. Dr. Chase?
Good evening, everyone. I have a teacher voice, too. Good evening, everyone. Is that better? All right. Good evening, community members, to the teachers who are here, you guys are looking fabulous, and to those, those who are up for tenure this evening, and to our parents and students and those of us who are watching at home. I believe Judy took half of my presentation, because I too wanted to acknowledge, that's okay, great minds think alike. I wanted to also acknowledge our school-related support staff. Those individuals, as Judy described, are those people who we consider to be boots-on-the-ground individuals. Those are those who are on the front line in making sure things function. Our bus drivers, the first people our children see in the morning are our bus drivers. The bus drivers have a big role in that. They determine a child's day. If they have a bad experience on the bus, you better believe it's coming into our classrooms. Am I correct, teachers? They also determine how a child's day ends, and we take for granted sometimes the importance of the job of our teaching assistants, our teacher aides, those who are in the cafeteria, our health aide workers, our custodial workers who are also part of this particular celebratory day. And so I'm hoping that those who work in the district, who fall under those support staff categories, can hear both Judy's words and my words, and I'm sure we speak on behalf of everyone in this room. We thank them for all that they do, and no deed goes unnoticed. We notice. And it is not every day that we say thank you to those individuals, but we know that these are the individuals that help us run our buildings efficiently. They're the ones who keep our buildings safe and clean. They're the ones we call on when we need support and help, and so we want them to know that they are very special to us, and although we don't say thank you every day, we just hope that this day, they feel a little bit extra special. And so we congratulate those individuals. I also would like to acknowledge our football team. Many of you have read in the newspaper, and you've probably have seen posts, you've seen Facebook comments, and you've probably just heard through the grapevine that our football team happens to be one of the best in its section. Our boys competed very, very well in the section champion. However, they fell a little short at the very end, but they are our champions nonetheless. And although they did not win the section, with some of the challenges they endured, I had the opportunity firsthand, along with our public relations specialist, Mr. Lewis, my secretary, Mr. Newkirk, to just spend some time with those young men, and I have to tell you, you will fall in love instantly with them as a team. The nicest, the sweetest, the most intelligent, thoughtful, and they told me to make sure I say handsome, young men you can ever come across, just absolutely charming young men, and I just wish that everyone in the world would know who they are as individuals. I'm extremely proud of them, and although they did not win the championship title, per se, here's what happened. Since then, some of our boys were selected to participate on an all-star team because people recognize greatness in our school district. Mr. Amari Bilal, who's the quarterback, is acknowledged and will serve on an all-star team. Omar De, I have more. Oh, I have more. Omar DeBerry, who was the MVP, defensive MVP of the championship game. Aaron Robertson, who filled in for Amari as the quarterback during the game and played his heart out and is absolutely charming. Baba So, smart, intelligent young man. You will be reading about this young man in the future. Cameron Laurel, Jaheer, McIver, Chris Holmes, Siddiq Stewart. All of these talented, fantastic students have been acknowledged and will serve on an all-league team. Moreover, there's more. I'd like to extend congratulations to Amari DeBerry because he was selected to the all-conference team, and, oh, I have more. And a special congratulations to our own quarterback, one of the best in the county, Amari Bilal, for being selected as the all-section team, and, you ready for this? And he needs to get a strong round of applause for this one, for being voted the most valuable defensive player in Class C. That came from Woodlands High School. That came from Woodlands High School, and if you ever have an opportunity, because I know that you all are subscribers to Facebook, of course, you're following our district, I know you are. Go on and please check out how these young men introduced themselves, you know, at the luncheon that we hosted for them, and, and just look in their eyes and just see who they are. You all, as elementary teachers, had these guys as babies, you've watched them grow up, and as high school teachers, I know that you're just so proud to see these young men and what they have become. So I want to thank them and congratulate them. I also want to congratulate, and I saw Michelle, where is she? I want to congratulate you, Michelle, and your team and the PTA Council for putting together the Resource Fair. Some of us could not be here on the dais because some of us were in Buffalo at the NISBA conference. Many of us were in Buffalo, and so we could not attend that because I heard your little pitch on, "We need more people." And you're right, because I think had we been here, we would have. I heard wonderful things about it. I know how much work you put into it. In fact, Michelle, I remember when it was an idea, when you approached me in the parking lot with your friends, and you said, "This is where we're going, and this is what we want to do." And so I understand this is a long time coming, and you should feel very, very proud because that's the fruit of the hard labor that you all put into not only making our school district shine, but providing an opportunity for our parents to take in resources and learn more about how they can better raise their children. And so I thank you for that, and I know next year will be bigger and better. I need my iPad. I, I want to just remind everyone in the community that tomorrow evening, we'll be hosting our first informal event, the Superintendent's Dessert, and some of you received a phone blast tonight. Please come out to meet our board members, come out to meet other community members, join us, join the Community Engagement Committee, because this is a combined joint effort with the Community Engagement Committee. Not only will you enjoy delectable desserts and probably gain about two, three pounds more, but you'll also have an opportunity to engage in formal dialogue, just to learn about the status of our school district and learn more about our programs and the direction that we're going. There's no agenda whatsoever. We ask questions, we answer questions, we learn more about the school district, and every time we host a Superintendent's Dessert or Superintendent's Tea, we get more and more individuals who are interested in just learning more about our school district and volunteering. So we thank you, and we hope you can come out. That's tomorrow, 6:30 PM at The Mansion. You'll be satisfied. I also want to speak to our parents for a second. The school district, last year, in developing the calendar, made a commitment, the administrators, that we want to celebrate parent involvement in our school district. We don't want it to just be an event, but this is something that we are. This is something that's going to be a staple in our school district, and not just one day, but many times. What the PTA Council put together, parent involvement, family involvement, the Superintendent's Tea, Superintendent's Dessert, community engagement, community involvement, what we saw at Highview School with the Bungie Reading Program, a true example of community involvement. November 17th is Parent Involvement Day. Parents, if you can give a half hour, 10 minutes, two hours, it doesn't matter the amount of time, I am encouraging you to please come to your child's school. This year's theme is "A Day in the Life of a Greenberg Central School District Student." It's posted on our Facebook. You probably received a personal letter from me, parents, inviting you to come out to Parent Involvement Day. We want to show a very strong show of support of parents to come out, whether you are a caregiver, whether you are a neighbor, a grandparent, you are invited. You will join your child... You will join your child at arrival, you will walk in, the principals will share with you what will happen first, and you will shadow your child for the day to experience what he or she experiences here in our school district. There will be other fun-filled events for you that particular day at the school. It really allows you to immerse yourself in the school culture, and you can see exactly what I see on a regular basis in our school. And what we're hoping is that you can share with your neighbors what you see in our schools, and we are very confident that you will be pleased. So please join us. November 17th is National Parent Involvement Day, but it's also Greenberg Central School District Parent Involvement Day, "A Day in the Life of a Greenberg Central School District Student." My last message for you this evening is a message that I actually wrote out, but I decided not to do that, and I'll just speak to you just based on what's in my head and what's in my heart. It is no surprise that the last couple of days have been pretty tough in our school district and in school districts around the world. And regardless of your personal feelings, or your professional feelings, or your political feelings, at the end of the day, children are watching us. Kids are relying on us to demonstrate leadership. And as we approach the holiday season, I am going to encourage all of you to make a commitment to put something back into our schools, into social media, more so in our homes, and just everything that we do. And that is a word that begins with L, and a lot of people don't like talking about it, because it's never used in the curriculum, and that's love. There's an absence of that today. We live in a very selfish society. Very selfish. Our children are constantly being bombarded by the ills of this society, and kids are acting on what it is that they see. We've exposed our children to too much, but we also have an opportunity, especially as we approach Thanksgiving, to redirect some of the things that our students and our children have been exposed to by showing them examples of gratitude, showing them examples of caring for their fellow man, showing them examples of how to love selflessly, showing them examples of what it means to be truly thankful. You know, most times, people will associate Thanksgiving, Mr. Mastriangelo, with having a big feast, enjoying mega sales, the holiday sales, family gatherings, but it's really a time where we think about and we reflect on our own lives, and we consider the things in which we're thankful for. And we all complain about the things that we don't have, but let's consider the things that we do have. Many of us have people in our lives who love us unconditionally. We have a roof over our shoulders, over our heads, we have clothes on our backs, and for the most part, we have food on our table. If we can teach kids to be appreciative, to love selflessly, to respect their fellow man, and not look at people just on the surface and pass judgment, but look into people's hearts and learn how to accept people for who they are, I think we can redirect some of the ills that we've been exposed to for the past couple of days. So let's commit to Thanksgiving not just being about a big feast and enjoying the sales and all the other things that go along with it, but let's commit to redirecting some of the behavior that we've been exposed to for the past couple of days, and I dare say for about a year and a half. Thanksgiving is an opportunity, is an opportunity to do that. And with that, I would like to, on behalf of all the administrators in the school district, to thank our community for all that they've done in supporting us and being the leaders that we are today. I hold the teachers with the highest level of gratitude in this school district, because through all the turmoil that we've been through, you guys hold us down. And so don't ever think we take that for granted. We thank the community for their support. I want us to think about all the things in which we're thankful for. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. I want you to be reflective and keep in mind this last statement, our kids are watching. I promise you, kids are watching and they're listening right now. They watch what we do, what we say. They watch what we say and then what we do. They watch our body language. Let's teach them well. Thank you all, and have a good night.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report.
I just wanted to provide you with a brief update on our 1718 budget development. We're well underway on developing or beginning the development process for the 1718 school year. We are in the process right now of compiling the data that we received from our administration. Our building principals will be working with Dr. Valeni on staffing requests for the upcoming school year. We will be providing draft one to the superintendent prior to the December break, and we will be prepared to bring it to the fiscal planning committee in the community on January 24th at 6:00 PM at RJ Bailey. As you know, we've talked about it many times, we've had multiple audits, and they finally all ended. Well, now we have more beginning. Ms. Madera, each year, we schedule an annual risk assessment. Ms. Madera has scheduled that to be completed January 4th through 6th, and we are waiting confirmation as to when in March we will have our focus area of student activities completed. We anticipate having that in March, but again, we're waiting for the final confirmation of that. And the only other news that we have is our fire alarm. Our fire alarm installation begins on Monday.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I need to make a statement and then ask you some questions. This is a relatively serious matter, I think. As discussed in a recent audit committee meeting, per our external auditor, O'Connor Davies, one of the student activity funds and the extra classroom activity fund ended the 2016 school year with a deficit. The main cause of the deficit is that a larger number of students than planned were allowed to go on an extended field trip, and the cost of an extra bus exceeded the amount available in the fund. Unlike other funds, the extra classroom activity fund isn't managed by the district administration, but we audited at the end of the year. Okay? So we have less, we have less control over it than the other funds. But we have to respond, and the board's response to this issue is, one, this fund should not be allowed to make disbursements until there's a positive balance in the fund. Two, our internal auditing fund, Darkangel, is performing an in-depth audit of the classroom activity fund. I believe you've mentioned that already.
Yes.
And three, district administration will arrange for a claims auditor to audit the extra classroom activity fund during the course of the year. Okay? That's what we've planned to do about this problem. The, my questions for RU, are RU for, let's see. First, earlier this year, our internal audit indicated that some clubs had no transactions for the 2015-16 school year. If there are, in fact, clubs that are defunct, no longer operating, but there are treasuries sitting there with a small remaining amount of money, can the student activity fund absorb that money and bring their negative balance up closer to zero? Are we allowed to do that?
I will check on that. Normally, what I have seen is that the board would approve it going to something like the National Honor Society, but I can check to see if we, if you can designate any funds that are remaining, if they can go to the middle school.
Good. Two, when is the internal auditor scheduled to do as the review? You said March, you think?
March is the tentative. We don't have specific dates yet.
Okay. And what, three, what is the status of getting a claims auditor to monitor the extra classroom activity fund?
We have a couple of options. We could assign someone from the business office to review on a monthly or a quarterly basis, or you could have the internal claims auditor do it. If we had the, our internal claims auditor, who already audits everything the district does, our accounts payable, she's now auditing our payroll, we would have to go out for an RFP and increase the scope of service.
And what would you recommend?
I would recommend an internal claims auditor.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Terry?
Good afternoon, or good evening, rather. The Governance Committee met, and the Government Relations Committee also met afterwards, it's the same three members. And we held this meeting via conference call, but going forward, we're going to hold this meeting, and we're going to utilize our technology and hold it on Google, Google Chat? What is it called? Google Hangout. Google Hangout. So just go over a few things from the government, the Governance Committee meeting. We will be distributing a committee meeting report template. The committee recommends that the board adopt a template developed by Antoinette Darden Centron to use to make reports to the board and to the public. The template will be included in Friday's packet, and the vote for adoption will be held at the next work session, next work session. One feature of the template is public reporting on subcommittee business will be limited to consensus items by the committee members present at the meeting, or recommendations to the board for adoption. The committee also discussed the winter retreat, and Dr. Chase is going to identify team-building exercises that will be the focus of this, of the winter retreat. We also discussed creating an acknowledgement document for board members to sign to say that they've accepted, they've received and accepted certain documents, so that we can avoid saying that I never got that. And we also set our schedule for the rest of the year. The committee will be meeting on Sundays after a full board meeting, with Thursday as an alternate. And again, meetings will be on, online on Google Hangout, and the conference call will serve as a backup. That is it for the Governance Committee. The Government Relations Committee also met subsequent to that meeting, and all of those items are executive session items as they are related to legal affairs. And we'll have a report at the, at the next work session, during executive session.
Thank you. Other reports?
Got one, David. The Health and Wellness Committee will be meeting in December 12th at the high school. The exact location is not, is to be announced. As soon as I get a location, I will inform the committee that we'll be meeting on December 12th. Okay? And also, I think the time would be about 2:45 PM. So we'll let you all know later the exact location. Thank you.
Other reports? Yes, Anthony.
Yes. Good evening. The Communications Committee met. We discussed, again, our branding. We previewed some of the scanned images of logos, and we actually sent it out to the entire committee to make one last, final decision on which logos they liked the best, and we shared that via email with Rocco. The drone video, Evelyn and Steve Lewis were going to meet to map out a storyboard for our video communication. We like to, in regards to the survey, in order to get more meaty feedback, we like to go into the direction of using focus groups. So a new committee member will take a look into what that process would entail in regards to the website. We are hoping for a launch to take place on the Monday after Thanksgiving. Building leaders are creating their pages, presentation of the website, to be presented at the next board meeting. Our next communication meeting will take place on November 3rd in The Mansion at 6:30 PM. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other reports? The Community Engagement Committee has not met since our last board meeting. Our next CEC meeting is Monday, 11/21 at 7:00 PM at RJ Bailey. All are welcome. I should also reiterate that the superintendent's tea tomorrow night, your, all CEC members are encouraged to attend. It's at 6:30 PM. And that concludes committee reports. Next up on our agenda, personnel items. Do I hear a motion to adopt? Do I hear a motion to adopt items D, 1 through 5, and 8 through 15 on our agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adopt items 6 and 7 under personnel?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Dr. Chase, would you like to say a few words?
Will Ms. Satacondro and Ms. Weinberg please come forward?
Come forward, ladies. Come forward.
It's a wonderful day. We're excited.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm going to learn from it now. Congratulations.
Total opportunity. We're wanting you to join us. We're on photo opportunity.
The board members, the principals participated in this picture.
Come on in.
To continue with our agenda, moving on to board action. Do I hear a motion to, for, to pass items 1 through 4, items under Section E?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Finance. Do I hear a motion to pass items 1 through 3 on our agenda? F 1 through 3.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Business. Do I hear a motion to approve items 1 through 6 under Business?
Summer.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Student Services, item H. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
To pass items- To pass items 1, H 1 through 3 on our agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I think we're good and we've moved on to closing items and the first item up is discussion of district goals. And there's an attachment. Dr. Chase, I believe you drafted this. Would you like to, uh, lead us through it?
Sure. At our work session meeting, we worked with consultant Ed McCormick who helped us to take a look at our focus areas as described in our strategic plan and for the school board to, uh, create goals for the 16, 17 school year that are in alignment to each particular focus area. If you were not able to pull it up, I do have hard copies for anyone who's not able to pull it up in case you need it. But the first focus area, um, that we as a strategic plan committee came up with was the update district facilities and technology. And so, the board has proposed a goal of initiate the development of technology systems and practices that support an evolving and adaptable learning environment. Focus area two, and I'm reading it out because obviously our listening audience do not have a copy of this, so I'm reading it out so that everyone can hear this. Our focus area two was to expand stakeholder engagement. And so, the school board proposed for 16, 17 school year as their goal under that particular category to continue to develop partnerships and business, with business and community-based organizations to secure additional resources to support district programs. Their third, your, our third focus area is to align and articulate curriculum. Well, a goal that we came up with is that we want to improve student achievement in both literacy and numeracy by 5% for at least 80% of our students for the academic year of 2016, 2017. And that will be measured for grades K through 8 using our I-Ready assessment and for grades 9 through 12 using our English Language Arts and Integrated Algebra regents. Stabilized leadership was our fourth focus area and the goal for that particular area is to expand UDL. And for those of you who are not familiar with the acronym, it's Universal Design for Learning and I love what you did was at State. Keep calm and learn your way. I like that. You will see that again. Expand Universal Design for Learning Training to at least 90% of staff for the academic year of 2016, 2017. And our fifth area is fiscal stability and efficiency. And the goal the board came up with is to establish and implement cost-saving measures each year of the strategic horizon. And the strategic horizon simply means each year that the strategic plan is in place by focusing on implementing more efficient ways to communicate with the public for the academic year of 2016, 2017. And so, if the board is comfortable with this or if they would like to make comments, um, I'm open to them.
Comments from board members?
All right, I'll, I'll start off. I have a, I have a couple of comments. All of this looks good to me. Uh, I, I guess I have one question and, and one possible addition. Um, my, uh, my addition would be in focus area 5. If I look back at all of the bullet points for what we want to develop over the fi-, the course of the five years, um, many of the, of the bullet points take more than one year to develop.
Sure.
And therefore, there'll be a number of things that are in the pipeline, so you can't expect them to have been completed by the first year. However, there, there's one that I think we can put a draft together on in the first year and that would be to create a, an, a five-year financial plan. Because you can draft, you can project however, uh, however carefully or, you know, with, however broad a brush, you know, what you think will happen in five years and then you can, uh, change it as you go as, as conditions change and you get a better and better idea of, uh, of what the future will be like. You can always modify it, but I think we can get an initial draft done by the end of this year. I think that will work and we can concentrate on it after we pass the budget.
I, I, I agree with you. I, I do. I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I'm sure that's, this is a board goal, so I would like to hear from everyone else.
Yeah. For the rest of the board? Okay. Uh, and then my question was...
Uh, Dave, I, I just wanna get Mary's, uh, Mary's, um, opinion on that. Number one, I'm, I'm just generally skeptical about, you know, planning out five years ahead for financial stuff primarily since our revenue is something we don't control. Um, and then of course, we're also at the, uh, the, um, vagaries of the state legislature. So, I just wanna get a sense from Mary if she thinks that is feasible, only because I don't, my only, my, my biggest concern is that we, we spend her time and it may not be effective and, you know, time is an asset that, you know, we can't get back. So, I just wanna get a sense from her, does she think it's feasible? And, you know...
Mary?
Um, I, I can do a five-year fiscal plan. The, the caveat would be, I mean, as things change, if, um, something changes with the curriculum, of course, the, the budget would change. If, if you have fuel prices all of a sudden go up, the budget will change or change drastically. If you had, um, any incident at one of the buildings, that work may be done. It, it changes constantly. So, even if I said five years from now, this is where I think you're gonna be, it's gonna be based on, you know, here's your current staffing, this is where we are now, if everything remains status quo moving forward, you know, this is where you would be. Um, and again, some of it would be based on contractual language. So, if you don't have a contract, it's a little bit harder to project, um, things such as, and I know you're looking at a, a building project, you're considering that. That would change your five-year, your five-year plan. By the time you added the debt on, uh, you added your debt service payments on, that would be reflective in there. So, as, as long as the board and the community understood that it would be based on what we know as of now and it would just be changing.
One of the things that's going through my mind is that I'm concerned that now the amount of money coming in has a lot to do with the tax cap and I'm wondering whether the tax cap is going to kill us in five years. So, I wanna look at the, at the input side especially. I, I know we do have create and implement a five-year financial plan on our focus area 5 from our, from our last meeting. Are you thinking that you wanna project fewer years in advance and have a, a, a better, uh, a better idea of what's happening in those three years or how would you change the goal, Terry?
Certainly shorter term would make it more plausible, that give the numbers more impact. My biggest concern, and it's not that I'm so much opposed to a five-year plan, I just don't see how much we can, how much, uh, good data, how much good information we can get from it. And then, and then it becomes a, is it an efficient use of Mary's time? What's, what's the cost benefit, right? So, if we get this document that after year three is really not giving us anything that's, that's, um, that's plausible, we've wasted her time. You know, but you know, listen, planning, obviously planning is good, uh, you know, you know, planning is good, but, um, I, I just wanna make sure we're, we're getting something that's plausible, something that's credible and, and, and again, using her time effectively. But, you know, listen, if, if it is the, certainly if it is the, uh, position of the board that, you know, five years is the way to go, I, I'll support it, but I just wanted to make sure that we, just taking into consideration that it may not be that accurate and the cost benefit may not be that great.
All right. Do I hear 3? What do other board members think?
Uh, I'll speak up. For me, uh, I, I don't think it hurts to create a plan, whether it's three years, four years, or five years, where we know that the numbers are what I call floating numbers, they're moving numbers. It's not anything that is stated and specific. But because of the, the fact that we don't know what the aid is gonna be and we don't know what kind of certs are gonna come in, that kinda thing, it does provide us somewhat of a, of a, a wide-range lens as to what we're looking at financially. Rather than to each year, start out and say, okay, what do we have? And then spend that amount of time trying to go through all of that and, and determine where are we at the end of the day, I think this may be a better, and I also think efficient way, to take a look at what we have, where we're heading, what it looks like. For the reasons that, that I can think of immediately is, is our expanding enrollment. That's number one. The aging of our facilities. Our fight to get better funding, equity in funding is exactly the way it should be put. In order for us to get a sense of where we are and where we're heading, having those moving numbers giving, giving us a lens onto what the possibilities are, I think helps us also planning in our advocacy and also in, in, in the realities of, of who we are and how this district will continue to grow. So, for me, I think it's a smart, I think it's a smart plan. I know other districts do it and I do think it is an effective and efficient way with the understanding, as Terry you mentioned and I agree with you, that these are not specific stamped in ink numbers. These are numbers that will continue to move as circumstances change, but we have a realm that we can look at and say, okay, this is where we are and this is where we're going.
Okay. Eric?
David. I, I have a quick question for you. Um, Dr. Chase, in your, in your letter to us each week, this one, you, you had mentioned that on the, the 29th of November, that you were hoping that we might meet with Ed McCormick. And I was just wondering, if we're looking at this as a, as a partnership, bringing in the community that have worked on this and the faculty members, um, are we just here, are we having a discussion today or are you looking for us to move further to, in fact, to take an action tonight?
So, it's a great question. So, Ed McCormick will, um, has proposed to come back on the 29th to review the strategic plan and putting the objectives. What I am sharing tonight with the community are board goals. So, that would not necessarily be a community input, that comes from us in terms of board goals.
Uh, the, and the only reason that I asked, recognizing that, is that we, we had actually talked about the strategic plan incorporating our board goals and that our board goals and the strategic plan would then affect your goals as a superintendent.
Correct.
And I just wanted to make sure we didn't put carts ahead of horses or anything like that.
No, not at this time.
Okay. Just making sure that our...
No, that's a very good question, no.
Thank you.
Because as you will see, um, in, in the way it's laid out, and Ed McCormick actually sent this to me, for each one of the board goals, it's tied to one of the focus areas. Correct. Mm-hmm.
All right. Returning to what we were talking about, all right. Do I hear 3 years?
No.
Can I get 3 years?
Hey, Dave, you know, we can go for 5 years, don't, I mean, listen, my, my only, you're talking about the strategic, um, for financial purposes, right?
Right. Cause we wanna make the plan by the end of the year, whatever we do.
Yeah, we, we, listen, we can go for 5 years. I just, I just wanted to, you know, the way Claudia, and the way Claudia explained it, you know, so long as we, uh, characterize it to the community that, hey, these numbers are subject to change and these things are not written in stone, then that's good. I just wanted to raise that concern. So, 5 years is fine with me.
All right. 5 years it is. And that brings me to my second question, which is...
Mr. Warner, while you're on the question of fiscal responsibility too, we also have a fiscal planning committee. So, could this also be the work of the fiscal planning committee? Because I wanna acknowledge their role as well.
Yes.
And that also includes bringing in the community in developing this five-year plan.
Correct. Yes.
Does that sound, okay, all right.
That's appropriate. Yes. All right. Uh, the second question was if I look back at the, uh, align and articulate, uh, curriculum goal, uh, you talked about, let's see if I can find it here, 80% of the students?
Yes.
How did you come up with the 80% number?
Sure. When we met with Mr. McCormick, I think we came up with a number of 90%. And then we talked about attainable goals and realistic goals. And oftentimes, when you speak about student achievement, um, student achievement roughly speaks to 80, 85% of the population. Now, if we reach 90%, then we've exceeded our goal, but to set it at 90% as the initial goal, I don't think is realistic. Um, what is a lot more realistic, given what we have currently, is 80%. Um, but I am confident that we can exceed the 80% and that's how we came up with the number.
Okay. So, we'll leave it at 80% for this year and see how we do. All right. Other people have questions? Eric?
Dr. Chase, is that 80% inclusive of, of our entire student population?
That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Antoinette?
Um, I just wanted to add, I know, um, in our work session conversation, we did discuss, Dr. Chase, that you would be sharing some, um, ways to measure?
Sure.
And, um, how it will be, you know, the ways it will me, all of these goals will be measured and, and what procedures will be in place to do so, so...
So, once we solidify the goals and we agree, then I will come up with how they're going to be measured. I don't wanna do that until we solidify them and we agree on the goals. Um, but in terms of the align and articulate commu-, um, curriculum, I think it's pretty much spelled out for that particular one. Um, but just once we are settled on the others and then my team and I will come back with the objectives, who's gonna be responsible as measured by.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further comments, we move on. Oh. No, that was my other question. And I believe the next item on the agenda is a discussion of graduations. Dr. Chase?
All righty. So, in just keeping in, in the theme of fiscal responsibility, um, last year, the administrators and I, as we were developing our calendar, talked about more efficient ways to acknowledge our children as they move from school to school, from grade to grade. In our school district, we have quite a few moving up ceremonies. We move up for pre-K. We move up first grade. We move up again, third grade. We move up once again, sixth grade. We even move seventh grade to high school where kids literally go from the third floor to the second and first floor. And I don't, I'm not making light of it, but we talked about what's realistic for our school district and then what's appropriate. I think we all agree that graduation happens one time in a child's life and that is 12th grade. I don't wanna water down the word graduation, um, by indicating that you graduate from third grade to fourth grade or you graduate from sixth grade, you don't graduate. You're acknowledged for moving to the next grade or to the next school, the next level. So, there's been much conversation about moving up ceremonies, transition ceremonies, and we thought about the best way in which we can acknowledge our children and recognize our children and doing so in a way that's fun, that's age-appropriate, and in a way where we can also save money. So, I'm just gonna share with you what we've proposed for this year and I know it's quite early, yet we're talking about graduation and we're doing that because, um, there may be some things that we have to do a little bit different in terms of contracts and we wanna be able to have an early start. So, ECP typically has about four graduations, excuse me, four moving up ceremonies. There's one for the AM program, the PM program, and I think there are just two other in between. What we're proposing to do this year is instead of having various moving up ceremonies, to participate in ECP carnival where half-day pre-K meets with full-day pre-K and the kids will have a wonderful time in celebrating the end of ECP as they go into, um, Leif Jackson Elementary School. And that will take place on June 20th as per the calendar. On June 21st at 9:30 AM, Leif Jackson will have celebrations in individual first-grade classrooms, similar to what many other school districts do. There will be a whole grade celebration on the new playground, but in individual classrooms, we wanna highlight to our parents what it is that we've done all year long and students will celebrate their work. They will celebrate their writing, they will celebrate their other, um, assignments, students will be celebrating their published work and it will be done in a form of a party with parents. We've done in the form of parents, uh, as a party in each classroom. Children will also be able to share out with their parents what it is that they've learned during the school year. Following that activity in the classroom, there will be healthy snacks and beverages for the parents at Leif Jackson Elementary School as our way of sending our kids off to Highview Elementary School. And then speaking of Highview, on June 22nd at 9:30 AM, Highview will do something very similar to Leif Jackson in that there will be recognition in each classroom, each third grade classroom. Teachers will develop a PowerPoint of what the kids have learned and it will be one of those spirited PowerPoints where you see how they looked at the beginning of third grade and how they looked at the end and for some reason, every kid at high school is missing a tooth, at Highview is missing a tooth. So, it'll be really cute to see that. Um, children will be celebrated, their work will be celebrated, their work will be acknowledged, kids will be able to share out what it is that they've learned. And on the last day of school, there will be a sort of a clapping exercise, if you will, as kids board their buses, um, going off to, um, RJ Bailey Elementary School. At RJ Bailey Elementary School, the graduation will, well, that graduation, I keep saying that, moving up ceremony will take place... moving up ceremony will take place June 21st at 11:30 a.m. And RJ Bailey will have their moving up recognition exercises at Woodlands High School. But they will not use the auditorium as we've done in the past. Many of you know that in the auditorium, in the past, it has been excruciatingly hot in the auditorium, and the ceremonies are quite lengthy. We're going to do something a little bit different. And I want you to hear the middle school, high school, and then I'm going to go back to RJ Bailey, and I think it'll make sense to you. We realize that middle school students will be transitioning into high school. They'll be in the same building. We have one principal now. It is Woodlands Middle High School. Those kids will be moving again, and I said it lightly, but it is true, they'll be moving from third grade, third floor to the second and first floor. That being said, we want to acknowledge them for all the great things that they're doing. So we have a plethora of activities to acknowledge the recognition that students will be moving from the middle school atmosphere to the high school atmosphere. And those activities are as follows. On May 31st, we're going to combine our Honor Society events, and typically, the National Junior Honor Society is separate from the Honor Society. We want our middle school students to see what it's like to be inducted into Honor Society as high school. So those candidates will actually be a witness to the high school. And then vice versa, those high school students will help induct those middle school students as their little brothers and little sisters. Because we want to have a buddy program with middle school, high school students, we thought that that would be most fitting. On June 6th through the 9th, we're going to celebrate those eighth graders because they're going to take an awesome three-day trip, where those kids will be able to enjoy the end of eighth-grade life as they know it, and it will be well-chaperoned. They will also have a wonderful transition celebratory dance, and that will take place on the 16th. We're hoping that we can have it at a remote location as we did last year. But if all else fails, we, our contingency plan is that we will redesign our cafeteria into a dance hall. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to see the beginning year dance that the eighth grade or the middle school students hosted. The commons area was a dance hall, and that's what they anticipate doing once again. On the 22nd of June, there will be a breakfast for the eighth graders, and it will be a recognition breakfast, where parents will come out and students will receive awards, and they will receive their recognition certificates. And then there will be a full barbecue field day for seventh and eighth-grade students on that same particular day. June 27th, the seventh graders will have an opportunity to watch a movie called Pay It Forward. As you know, we are an IB school district, and Pay It Forward speaks very highly about the IB virtues. And so we want students to watch that because in the eighth grade, they will have to create their IB projects, their exit projects. And so we thought that that would be a wonderful opportunity for our students to begin thinking about what those projects might look like. But then what's going to happen on the 23rd is that there will be an IB presentation of the eighth graders will present to the seventh graders, so they can get an idea of what those IB projects will look like. As you see, you hear a lot of the buddy and a nice transition, but who's part of the transition? Not the adults, but the students are transitioning one another. For the high school graduation, typically, we've had our graduation at the county center. The county center cost us a little bit under $30,000 to rent the space. And we rent the space, and with all fairness to our high school, we are a small school, and we only utilize the first level. You never see people who are sitting in the stands. The acoustics is questionable, parking we have to pay, and we thought about what a beautiful campus we have. We're going to consolidate our campus. What do other world-class school districts do? Well, a lot of other world-class school districts show off their campus, and we thought that it is time to show off our campus community. So we thought to have our graduation right here on our campus. And that graduation will take place on June 23rd, and we agreed at a 5 o'clock start time to give parents an opportunity, if they'd like, to work a half-day and enjoy the other half of the day with their children. The other reason why we chose that time is because we want to give parents an opportunity to take their children out to dinner after graduation. Daylight will still be with us at that time because it is in June. Pictures will look a lot better than nine o'clock in time, as we've traditionally had in this school district. We feel that it's time that we do things a little bit different, and we really want to show our campus off. So, school board members, I sent you all pictures of the canopy that we wish to use. We're going to rent a tent. The tent will have flaps on the side in the event it should rain. If it rains, we are well-protected because the tent will be up three days prior to graduation date. Now, I'm going to go back to Bailey. Bailey's going to use the tent. So we will have their recognition ceremony because they are truly moving from elementary to secondary, and so we thought it would be fitting for Bailey to have a wonderful opportunity to be under the tent. So that's why I'm circling back. So, for the high schools, some people may say, well, you know what, we have 120 students who are graduating. Typically, we give out 10 tickets. And if you take a look at the pictures, members of the board, that I sent you, the first one that says Sacred Heart, the first tent that you see holds 1,500 chairs. So here's what we've gauged. If we have 120 Massa Mendles students, right, around about, each child has 10 tickets, we're going to hold 1,200 seats. Now, not to say that other people won't come, but at least we know that we will be able to hold people. We will designate an area for our senior members who wish to watch it and don't want to be in the sun, and we'll have a designated area for them. We also have a designated area for wheelchair-accessible. In addition, we will also use our gym livestream for those who may not want to sit outside, where we will have a, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not a filler. But they will be able to, they can filter in the gymnasium if they don't want to sit outside, and they can actually watch the graduation in the gymnasium if being outside is not appropriate for them. There will also be porta-johns, and I don't mean to be very descriptive, Vicki, but just bear with me. The porta-john does have a toilet as well as a urinal. We've got the fancy ones that we're going to rent, not the cheesy ones, if you will. The bathroom in our schools will also be available for those who need to use the restroom. So we talked about having so many cars on campus, and we thought about that. This, I'm sorry, the soccer field. I apologize, the soccer field. So we thought about so many cars on campus, and we have a fantastic relationship with our police department. We will ask our police department to manage the traffic movement, but we will also utilize our monitor staff because we know that there will be cars parked throughout our campus. The goal is that we shut our campus down at 3 o'clock because it is a special day. It is a day that we're celebrating kids. The Warburgs left this campus for the purpose of educating kids, and it's an important day to us. So we will shut the campus down at 3 o'clock to clear the parking lot so that we will have ample parking. We have designated handicap parking space already. We have designated various teaching parking spots so that teachers will have spaces to park. We've designated additional parking areas. We will use Royal Coach to provide shuttle service so that people do not have to walk from the ECP parking lot all the way to the high school graduation area. And so we have that, we will have that in place as well, and our monitors will help the individuals to get on and off the bus as appropriate. We will fill all of our parking spaces until we get to the end of our campus and all the parking has been covered. If in fact we feel that we will need additional parking, and that may happen, we look forward to having conversations with our friends at Solomon Schechter and Maria Regina, where buses can also pick up parents if we need additional space. So, school board members, we've crossed out what the tent will look like, and by the way, what I didn't mention is that the tent you see is really not what we want. I just want to show you some examples of what we were looking at. The tent that we really want is the one that says Somers High School, because it has side flaps, and the flaps will help us to maintain the beauty of the tent, so that if it does rain two or three days before, we don't have to worry about that particular portion of the grass being wet. It's already protected. In addition, we like the idea of the flaps because we don't know if it's going to rain that day. Rain or shine, graduation is going to happen. And so we want to have a contingency plan already in place, and this will hold the capacity should it rain. A tent like this, again, will hold just about 1,500. We don't anticipate that many. There will also be a stage for the dais, and of course, the school board members and distinguished guests will sit on the dais. We have an area that will be designated for our band to provide music for the graduation purposes. You see that there is a red carpet in this picture. We're going to have a green carpet because we are Greenberg. We're going to have a green carpet because we are the Falcons. We will have our Falcons banner. The dais will be draped in green and white cloth, and we will have our flag. We've already have identified an individual who will work on our sound, and sound will cost us less than about $1,000, which is really not an expensive expense at all for sound. The gentleman that we are going to work with has done graduations in neighboring school districts, and so we have someone who is reputable. He will be coming around to do a walk of our campus to ensure that our sound will be adequate for the graduation dates. We will have balloons, pillar balloons throughout. We thought the balloon arch is a little baby for our high school students. So we will have the pillar balloons as well. I just want to share with you the thinking behind hosting, not only do we want to just demonstrate that we have a beautiful campus, and we know that this is definitely a savings to our district, and it makes sense. There are only about four other school districts that use the county center. Everyone else either use their own campus, or they may go to a small theater, and we will not fit in a small theater. It absolutely makes sense. But the thinking behind it is as follows. We want the children to walk through the halls of Woodlands High School as 12th-grade seniors, and when they walk back through the halls, they will be officially alumni. And we want them to have that experience at their own school, and we just think it will be absolutely beautiful. So I am more than willing to answer any questions that you all may have.
I don't know if I missed it, but can you have those sports pools situated for water for drinking?
That is, that is something, we can speak to Aramok about that, it was something that we can consider. So thank you, I'll make a note of that.
Okay, so I have a question.
Okay, so what was, when you calculated all of these things, the tent and security and the cost monitors, all that stuff that we have, what is the cost for the setting up? Again, the equipment, because it's still, we still have the usual things, the food, you know, refreshments for everyone, like we usually, what does that have? And the dais I'm looking at, is that dais is set up by the same people who present the tent, who put the tent up?
Yes, oh, that's an excellent question.
And which soccer field is this graduation supposedly to take place?
The one that's adjacent to the baseball field?
Is that, the one, okay, wait, the one, outside the gym?
Yes, outside the gym.
Okay, so outside the gym. That, that field being, is not, that's not official, that's not artificial turf, right?
The turf would be most appropriate, more so appropriate than a football field to hold the graduation.
Correct. Right, so, and then the field itself, though, let's just say for argument's sake, it does rain prior to them putting up the tent. I mean, what's in place to make sure all of this stuff stays, you know, secure? Will parking still be allowed near the gymnasium as well?
Okay.
Because I know you said there's going to be parking and people walking and buses and so forth and so on, but, okay. And ballpark figure as to how much this is going to cost?
So graduation for the middle school cost us roughly last year $7,900. Bailey's graduation, I didn't get that estimate cost, but at the county center with all the costs, cost us nearly about $26,000 with everything included.
Wait, I'm sorry, Dr., all the graduations?
No.
Okay, say it again.
No, just middle school graduation alone was $7,900.
$7,900, middle school.
Last year.
Okay.
Last year, we spent nearly $26,000 at the high school for graduation. What we are looking at this year in terms of the cost for the stage and the porta-johns and the tents with the flaps, we're looking at close to just one graduation, about $16,000. Keep in mind, the $7,900 that we spent last year will be decreased because we're not having the traditional middle school ceremony. Now that we're also going to have Bailey, those costs that were attached to the Bailey graduation will be absorbed because we're going to actually share the tent. You asked me about the security of the tent. Our custodians, as much as we trust, respect, and love them, will not be responsible for securing the tent. The company that actually we're renting it from will be the company who will secure the tent for us. And these companies have been used by other school districts who have the same model for graduation. And so they're tried and true. They will be responsible for setting up as well as for taking down. This is why I shared earlier, the setup will take place days before graduation. So in the event it should rain, the flaps will prevent the rain from coming into the graduation site. And that's why we're going to do it that way, and that's why we have the flaps. The beauty of the flaps is that if we would like, we can actually roll them up for ventilation purposes. And also the flaps, we can order additional ventilation if we like, if we want, like little fans within the flap, so that the area can be nicely cooled. You asked about parking near the gym. There will be designated parking near the cafeteria. There's a parking lot for staff.
Right.
For the, where the gym area is where we're going to have our handicap-accessible parking.
Okay.
And also for distinguished guests. And then we're going to start filling the parking lot until we get all the way down to ECP, and if we have to filter over into the other schools, we'll have an agreement made already. We're not overly concerned by parking. We think we're going to be covered because we have the mansion parking, we have the high school parking lot in the front, we have the parking lot in the back, we also have ECP, we have the mansion and then the side parking, which is why we're relying on the professionalism and the expertise of our police to help guide the traffic as well. Did I answer all of your questions? Oh, you asked about the setup of the dais. The company which we're renting the tent and the stage from will also do the setup. We're not doing that ourselves. That will be set up professionally.
Okay. Is it possible, I would like to, if at all possible, Ms. O'Neal, to get invoices from past, from the past graduations? If we can get that, that'd be greatly appreciated. And the breakdown, like you said, like you're saying now, to send to us.
Other questions?
Yes, Dr. Chase, as far as security, you said the police will be available. At what cost?
Well, we don't know that yet. We've used the police in the past, and keep in mind, we also pay the police at the county center to also police the county center. We haven't discussed that with the police, but we've used them in the past. We've used them for our homecoming football game to direct traffic. We use them to go on our trips. So that will be something that we will work out with the town. I don't have that cost yet.
Right. And is the police the only security people will have, or will have additional?
No, we're going to use our monitors. I mean, the police will be on-site. I am more than certain that they will also serve as security. We don't anticipate that we'll need that for that particular occasion, but one never knows. The police purpose is mainly for traffic control, but if the board believes that we need additional security with our police, I'm sure Chief McNerney will not mind deploying one or two police officers to join us.
Okay. Other questions? Teri?
I don't have a question as much as I just want to say to Dr. Chase and the rest of the board that I think this is a fantastic idea. I've expressed this in the past, and I just want to say, Dr. Chase, thank you for the deep due diligence that you did in providing us not only with the examples of how this might look, but also providing us with some very good representative figures. Are there a few ancillary costs that haven't been considered? Sure, there always is with anything. But this is, this is a very good start. And also, again, just for branding purposes and, excuse me, just for branding purposes and showing off our grounds, this is, this is the, this is the penultimate thing that you want to do with graduation. You know, I grew up in the city, so you were always in an auditorium when you had graduation. And, you know, once I left my parents' home and lived outside of the state and lived in different areas, I realized that, you know, districts like ours did it this way. It's a beautiful thing. I was up at, my oldest son graduated from the University of Albany this past spring. They had it outside as well. Much larger, much, much larger student body, obviously, and much larger campus, but the logistics were figured out. and much larger campus, but the logistics were figured out. This is how you want to present your school district. Nothing against the county center, but the county center does not represent Woodlands High School. This is how we want to do it. So, I, I commend you. I agree 100% with what you've done. I support it 100%. And I say, let's move forward with this.
Eric?
Thank you, Dr. Chase. That was an incredible presentation. I have one request. I tried to write down all of the exciting things for each of the different Moving Up ceremonies and recognition ceremonies. Is it possible for you to give us in the board packet sort of a breakdown? Thank you.
I'll give you my cheat sheet. You got it.
Other questions?
I just wanted to add, not along with the breakdown of all the different activities, but projected costs.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions?
If, if I could, Michelle, just if you could just give me a second. So, and, and just, and, and just so we all are clear here, a lot of the activities, like certainly the, the eighth grade trip, that, that is something that the students pay for.
Right.
Right, okay. Just so that we all know, that is typically something that students pay for. I think, I think that's also very good. I know we used to do it, and then it was taken away for no good reason other than a previous superintendent thought it was not a good idea. I think, I think, I think it's a fantastic idea. In fact, my older son got to go, and my youngest son is still in my ear about that, the fact that he didn't get to have an eighth grade trip. So, again, I, I like the, I like the, the level of maturity that you're assuming that our students have. I know, I, I, I know our staff has successfully accompanied our, our young men and women on, on trips, and I can even see the math teacher whose name is escaping, Maria Pearson. She's got a system. I don't know if she's going to be the one chaperoning, but she's got a system in place. I mean, she, she Mr. calling if, I mean, she's a great math teacher, but she could also be a logistics expert, you know. So, I just wanted to make sure we all understand that a lot of these activities are, are, are paid for by the students through their activity fees and any fundraising that they do.
Questions from the community?
I have a comment. Because at some schools, who, like, when the high schoolers graduate, they actually visit the younger schools as like, as a welcoming. I don't, I don't know if we do that, but if there's some way to kind of make them pass through ECP and up, not on their graduation date, but maybe that week, and kind of just make the connection.
So, that was one of the things that we talked about. So, we're, we're definitely on the same page, because we want this to be a special event, and we also want the younger children to be able to see what to aspire to in our, in our school district. And that was a conversation, it's not carbon stone. That was one of the little logistic pieces that we just have to, to work out. While I do have your attention, I have to say, you know, I appreciate the school board complimenting me on giving the presentation, but the, the, the engines behind this are Matt Smith, Ashley Jackson, Mandel Holland, Edgar Glasgow, Debbie Perullo, Dr. Joe Foy, Rob Dominguez, Maria Pearson, and I don't know if I mentioned Debbie Perullo, and, and just putting their minds together and talking about what's in the best interest of our kids, and what do we want for our kids, and how do we make our kids feel special. And also, too, to the principals for working with their staff and coming up with some out-of-the-box ideas for making kids feel like rock stars, you know, as they transition from school to school to school. And so, I have to thank everyone whom I've named, including the principals, for really putting this together. And I was just the mouthpiece for them. So, congratulations to you guys, you know, just for coming up with a brilliant idea. I think this is going to be an amazing 2016 recognition graduation season, because it is different. And I think Mr. Williams hit the nail on the head. What better way to continue to support and protect our brand by bringing this onto our campus? We have a fabulous campus. Why not use it? I think there were some more questions or comments from the community.
Other questions? Mr. Court?
Yeah, Ms. Sherman, I just wanted to sign up. I, I think I've heard we have a kind of security for property control, which is, I think, is my best. But can you say of kind of a cynical crime, or, or, or do you think of negotiations, some sort of security crime?
That's from the police department.
That's from the police department. So, the question is, we have some sort of, of security coverage when we're at the county center from the Greenberg Police Department, and then the possibility is that we'll do the same thing by bringing the police to Woodlands Campus.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Court?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
All right.
Is that your answer?
All right, I, I'm going to express my opinion. I think that was an excellent report.
Thank you.
I like the tent. I'm not-
They're very pretty. You guys are missing out there.
I'm not the customer-
I'm sure it's on the general audience.
I'm not the customer any longer for the, for the Moving Up ceremonies in between, so I'll, I'll suspend judgment and, and hear from the parents over the course of the month, and I'm sure they'll speak.
Oh, I'm sure.
And, and so, when do we need to make our decision?
Are we having a discussion, or we're talking about making a decision? Are we having a discussion?
If I'm, if I, if I could remark on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to, I, I would like to move forward on this as soon as possible, simply because we have to let the county center know in the next couple of weeks that we will not be utilizing their services, so they can actually give that slot to someone else if need be. The only slot available is 7 p.m. We can't go 4, 5, or 3 o'clock, because that's already covered, and traditionally, it's been covered by another school district. So we will have to, you know, be able to also to have contracts in place and, and, and move forward as quickly as we possibly can.
So, what happens if we mention our work session in the next work session?
And that was going to be, that was going to be my comment, Dr. Chase. I know that there was a request for kind of like a cost analysis, and, and obviously, that's, we, we just, we want to make sure that everything is being taken care of, everything is being looked at, because it, it is a major undertaking first year out. We have a work session coming up. I think that between now and that work session, I think all of the, the questions that may be needing to be addressed, cost, et cetera, and just to get it, to get a slightly clearer vision as to how this will work, because there are, again, there are moving parts. And I think that by the next work session, we could really get a, a clear idea and create the consensus for, for moving forward with this. I do see it as visionary. One of the things that I, that I want to commend all those that are involved in it is that, notice that we're here in November, and we're talking about graduation. So, we're, we're continuing to be a district that, that goes beyond just what's happening in the day-to-day, but we're looking out for the future of our students, we're looking out for the future of our district. We're looking to create and continue to create a positive environment. You know, we, we have a hashtag called We Are Greenberg, and that, this is really what this is about. We, we are the Warburg campus, we are, we are Greenberg. So I commend all those that, that are in the conversation now, and I look forward with the board members to get the information that, that we should have to make a, a good, sound fiscal decision. But I look forward to, to seeing how we can put this all together.
Very good. All right. And the last item, item on our agenda, new business. Does anyone have any new business they wish to discuss tonight? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.